If I can have your attention, I'd like to call the November Board Meeting order, please. The press has been notified and I would mention, not that it would change any behavior in the room, but we are being televised and it will be broadcast at a later time on Channel 11. Ms. Jaggers, we call the roll, please.
Mr. Bowles?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Coleman?
Here.
Dr. Doudja?
Here.
Mr. Elmore?
Here.
Ms. Emery?
Here.
Mr. Arden? Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Gunn?
Here.
Ms. Hartung?
Here.
Mr. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Senator Legeman? Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. McIntyre?
Here.
Mr. Norwood?
Here.
Dr. R. Kelly?
Here.
Mrs. Richardson?
Here.
Mr. Stan.
Thank you. Next item is approval of the minutes. Everybody's had an opportunity to review the minutes. Any change, addition, deletion to the minutes that you'd like to bring forth at this time?
Will they be accepted? Mr. President?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Moving right to committee reports. Out of Executive Affairs Committee, I'm very pleased to bring a resolution. And I would mention that this is information only for this meeting. It will be presented by the Executive Affairs Committee on March for approval. And as for one of our own, whereas W. Coleman is a distinguished and respected resident of Florence, the PD Region, and the state of South Carolina, Mr. Coleman is alumnus and lifelong proponent for Francis Marion University and its programs. He's been an enthusiastic proponent for establishing a new athletic complex and for enhancing the success of the university's intercollegiate athletic programs. He's generously contributed of his time, expertise, and resources for Francis Marion University. He should get credit for this. He's served twice as chairman of the board. That should be enough right there, W. Desires to acknowledge the contribution to the University of Mr. Coleman with a permanent tribute. Francis Marion University hereby would name the Athletic Complex Lake in honor of Mr. William W. Coleman. And I think this is well deserved for his years of service, dedication, and devotion to Francis Marion. Any question or comment before we move on?
Mr. Chairman, I would just say this. There was considerable discussions whether or not this body of water truly constitutes a lake or a pond. And we ultimately concluded that a man of Mr. Coleman's stature merits a lake rather than a pond. Just kidding. So we've adopted the rule of thumb that any body of water on this campus larger than four acres in the future will be deemed a lake rather than a pond.
Well, I've had the honor and privilege of serving with W. for a number of years. Again, I think it's well deserved and we look forward to making this official in the March meeting. Moving right along to academic affairs and accreditation. Ms. Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee this morning heard reports from and received updates from a number of faculty and administrative staff. And we also have a resolution to bring before the board trustees this morning as well, which I'll begin with the resolution. Everyone received a copy in their packets, but I believe an updated version was also mailed. It's Resolution 0611. It's for approving the Francis Marion University Master of Science in Nursing and Family Nurse Practitioner Degree Program. And this was reviewed by the committee and it comes in the form of a motion for adoption to the full board trustees.
So we have a motion for the board. Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Elmore, second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As having, the motion is approved for the new Master of Science in Nursing Nurse Practitioner Degree Program to be offered by Francis Marion University. And I think that's a real plus and certainly a real good movement for the university. Next committee, development. Oh, it's something else. You're not through, I'm sorry.
Just a few more things, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, it's a little cold in here.
Oh, it's freezing in here.
Trying to move through, but I won't rush anybody.
Now, just a few more things. And we, the Academic Affairs Committee, received so much information and it's all just great information. And it's hard to go through and pull out what I think is appropriate for everyone to hear. But there are a couple of things and I ask for forgiveness of those members that presented this morning because everything was important and everything I would like to hear, but time constraints just don't permit us to do that. But we do have, we did have a report from the Strategic Planning Committee. They met at a retreat and they looked at, their charge was to look at the strategic plan that we currently have in place and determine whether it needed a complete revamping or a revision. And I think the committee, which has now been constituted, looked at that and decided that basically our strategic plan is sound, that maybe we need to tweak it a little bit and revise some things. So hopefully in the coming meetings, we'll hear reports from that committee on changes that we are to consider for the strategic plan. We also heard from Dr. King about enrollment and it seems that every single year whoever is chair of Academic Affairs has reports with great glee. That is the largest enrollment ever. But we heard today that our applications are up 43.9% over the same time last year. Now, that's just phenomenal. That's 1,265 applications. And from what I was able to understand, a good part of that is due to increased personnel in that area in helping promote Francis Marion and collect those applications and process those applications as well. A couple of other items, something that I found just incredibly interesting and a real kudo to the business faculty. They talked about the MBA students and how now for the last four or five years, they are being tested at a national level through the Educational Testing Service to determine in their field, looking at six core subjects at the end of the MBA curriculum, how they stack up against MBA programs nationwide. All MBA programs nationwide and consistently, consistently since 2006, our numbers have been equal to or greater than all MBA students nationwide. And I hope, Dr. O'Brien, I'm not overstating that, but when you look at some of the schools of higher education and the schools of businesses where it costs a whole lot more to go to school, and our students in the MBA program are stacking up as well, if not better, and in most cases better than these other students, I think that is just phenomenal. And I was just floored when I heard that and very, very proud of the faculty in the business and the business programs. That concludes my.
Before you move on, trustee Hartung, on the resolution establishing the Master for Nurse Practition, when is that going to begin to be offered?
I will have to divert to.
I'd be glad to respond to that, Mr. Elmore. The first class for admitting the nurse educators and the nurse practitioners will begin in January of 2013, assuming that, of course, the C.H.E. approvals are required in the spring. We will begin hiring in spring and early fall. The other faculty, we need three additional faculty members to staff those programs and we anticipate opening the doors to that first class in 2013. That first class will have 35 people in it, 22 nurse practitioners, and I believe, Mr. Provost, 13 nurse educators.
That is correct, sir.
Total of 35. Thank you.
Any other questions? We have, Dr. O'Brien, you're on, thank you for all your work. He's in the very back, lady. We appreciate what you're doing. Good report, development and alumni affairs. Mr. Freeman?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. We met at 10:30 this morning with Mr. Jay Dowd and Julian Young from the Development Alumni Committee and Affairs Office. Couple of highlighted things. And the Education Foundation, they had their meeting October 26th. Currently in their budget at this time is a little over 25 million as of June 30th, I mean, excuse me, as of June 30th, Board of Ford.
Excuse me, that's in the endowment, not in the budget, okay? It's in the endowment. Just a small correction.
Everybody goes free.
He was just trying to see if you were paying attention.
Yes, yes. Dr. Cora Wood.
He saw it, he didn't write it down, right?
They also elected new officers and board members for the January, January 1st, 2012. Mr. Buddy Brand, chairman, Jim O'Lofflin, vice chairman, and Jane Huggins, secretary of treasurer. And then, of course, we had a few of our own, Mr. Noel Wood and Mr. Hal Campbell. They also rotated out there forward. Some of the upcoming events in the foundation office, the scholarship recipient will be held on February the 7th. That's going to be a small reception for both the donors and the recipients of those awards. On March 9th, please all put it on your calendars, will be our foundation, FNU Foundation Golf Tournament, which is going to be held at Country Club of South Carolina. We'll hopefully see all you there.
What was the date on that March?
March the 9th. It's on Friday. The Nonprofit Leadership Institute begins its 10th year in this past September with approximately 33 members represented by the nonprofit organizations throughout across the state. And they are also going to held the alumni workshop here in Murrah Beach again on March 22nd, 23rd for the alumni of that particular institute. So it's going very well. And also a new program that just kicked off this past September as well, something called the Rural Leadership Institute. And I think they're meeting here today in the president's dining room. Here again, this program has approximately 30 participants from the local rural communities such as Clarendon, Sumter, Darlington, Lee, Chesterfield, Williamsburg, Marburg, and Florence Counties. We, hopefully this is going to be a great program that's going to spread throughout the other rural communities throughout the state in the years to come. So here again, kudos off to the particular leadership of that organization. For us alumni, on September 15th, we had a Mittens Alumni Reception that was held at the Clarendon Downtown Hotel by former trustee, Mr. Bill Elliott, Class of 78. It was a great event and great attended and it's going to hopefully fulfill some of the further alumni events throughout the later years, I mean, next year. Alumni Association Board Retreat was on October 22nd. Of course, we have president, Jane Harrow. Mary Kay Hayne is vice president. Brian Kelly is the secretary. And what they did there is usually did the calendar year throughout the events for the upcoming year. Baseball Alumni Weekend was held on October 1st and 2nd. And as someone said in our meeting, everyone, of course, the alumni didn't win the particular alumni game, but they did put some scores on the board.
Not shut out.
Not shut out. That's correct. On October 4th, we had a psychology department host the annual award reception for that night. The reward recipient was Brian Denny, Class of 98, and also a Class of 2001. On October 18th, Biology Department held the annual awards reception in the cottage and Dr. Tredwick Campbell, 81, and George Bryan's award and Randy Albrecht, Class of 960, Lawrence Swells Award. October 25th, we had a business casual reception that was held by our own trustee, Tim Noel Wood, held at his restaurant. We wanted to say we appreciate that. We had several members of alumni. It was a great, great event and hopefully we'll continue to have that. It's going to be held like every month or every other month at various venues throughout the local area. October 5th was the Student Alumni Association's first inductee ceremony. Currently, we have approximately 60 people that was inducted and we got approximately 70 members that are currently members of the Alumni Association. And they are also raising funds right now to actually donate back to the FNU fund at the end of the year, that student ran situation. They want to donate that money back to us. Please mark the calendars also for January 26, 2012. It's going to be the Alumni Association's Annual Membership Dinner. That was greatly attended last year and hopefully we'll have the same success this year coming up. Mark the calendars for February 9th, if you will. We're going to have a upstate alumni reception in the, which means the Greenville, Spire McGarrett, which will be hosted by our own trustee, Frank Elmore, and also Mr. Brad Bowles. And information will follow from there. And then lastly, and not least, February 13th to the 18th, we'll kick off our homecoming events for the week with a capstone on that Saturday of being alumni, of being the homecoming event, homecoming games and so forth. So please mark the calendars. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Your report, any questions, any follow up? Mr. Freeman? If not, moving right along, financial affairs and facilities. Mr. McIntyre?
Mr. Chairman, our committee met and heard about the quarterly budget summary, which is found under Tab 4 in your notebooks. We have passed one quarter of the fiscal year. The university has received about 61% of its revenue for the year. And on the expenditure side, we are right around 24%, so we're right on target. So everything's in good order there after the first quarter of the fiscal year. Also, the headcount and FTEs are stable. If you look at the four-year change, very little change there. So we've been able to maintain a large degree of stability there during those four years and I think that's very commendable, given the economic times that we've gone through over these last four years. So thanks to administration and all that played a role in that. Next, on the next page, I'll just mention in passing, if you'll note, the Pell Grants increased pretty dramatically from 2010, 11 to this year, over $2 million more in Pell Grant awards. And while that's, you know, commendable, we also are concerned that due to the federal budget problems, that the federal government's looking at curtailing some funding for Pell Grants for next year. So that's going to present another challenge for us here at Francis Marion and all universities that are receiving a large portion of Pell Grants. So we'll have to address that as that time approaches, continuing at our same rate of 83% of our students receiving some form of financial assistance. Next, Mr. Chairman, we heard from audits. And each of you have a copy of the audit that's been provided to you. The university received an unqualified opinion in the audit this year. The auditor has no reservations concerning the financial statements that have been issued and a clean opinion, meaning that the financial statements fairly represent the financial position of Francis Marion. So it was a good audit, a clean audit. There were no findings that were material to the accuracy of the financial statements and auditing firm proposed no adjustments. The auditing firm also reported no instances of noncompliance in the audit. And I'd like to just, this audit is no easy task. It's an ongoing process. It's worked on daily and we've got a great team in place here that works with the auditing firm and stays on top of this on a daily basis, led by Gus McDeal, our assistant vice president for accounting, and his staff of Kathy Swartz, Director of Accounting Services, Laura Rhodes, Senior Accountant for Financial Reporting, Crystal Basin, Director of Financial Services and Student Accounts, and Quentin Williams, Senior Accountant and Cash Manager. And in financial aid, Kim Ellisors, our Director of Financial Assistance, and her staff, and they do a great job. And then in facilities management, Ralph Davis is our Director of Facilities Management and he's doing a great job in getting this audit completed in a timely and professional manner. And thanks to all of those people that played a role in that. Lastly, under facilities, Mr. Chairman, we looked at the athletic complex as it's nearing completion. Each of you have a recent handout on that. And we were pleased to hear that the site work is continuing daily with installation of sidewalks, pedestrian and street lighting, top dressing of the various berms and around the lake. Bridge installation work will begin next week. Parking lot, the parking lot underground detention tanks are complete and backfield is underway. Progress Energy is completing work on installing permanent power to the complex. In the baseball facility, the building, the building steel is about 90% complete with the roof installation. Interior walls and utilities are well underway. The overall building is about 75% complete. The playing field is about 90% complete. The playing light fields are installed and scoreboard structural steel will be installed next week. On the softball field, the building steel is 90% complete, the playing field 90% complete. Track materials will be installed next week. Playing lights are installed and again, the scoreboard steel will be installed next week. On the soccer field, the building steel is 90% complete, playing field 90% complete, and again, the scoreboard steel will be installed next week. And at the field house, the building steel is 95% complete, roof installation is nearly 90% complete, and overall building is nearly 75% complete. So we're on target and we look forward to taking complete possession and completion of this project in early January. We also look forward to having our first athletic events there in early February with baseball cranking up and softball. And everyone marked their calendars for April the 11th. That is the date for the USC Francis Marion baseball game to be hosted right here in our new athletic complex. So we're looking forward with great anticipation to that day. That completes my report. Mr. Chairman, if there are any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. McIntyre? Mr. Chairman, I would just remind the board that there is still substantial naming opportunity with the softball complex and the field house. I would just bring that to your attention.
That comes with a price, Mr. President?
Well, everything comes with a price, Mr. Chairman.
One thing, the audit before, I want to thank Mr. McIntyre for mentioning the staff and the president. I really think that's exceptional to have a good opinion and knowledge for this year, but that's been going on for some time even. That's not often the case and we greatly appreciate the work that they do to make that happen.
Now, and Mr. Kispert, under Mr. Kispert's supervision as well.
Any other questions for Mr. McIntyre? How do we get tickets for the April 11th game?
There is naming opportunity.
How much do tickets cost?
Athletic Director Hart has plenty of applications for the Swamp Hogs.
I would bet that that game sold out. Is that the case? Thank you. Moving right along, student affairs and athletics. Mr. Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At our meeting this morning, first of all, we heard from Dr. Carter as a guest, who introduced the SGA president, Cody Simpson. Purpose of this, of Cody attending this meeting was to report on the fact that for the first time in nearly 20 years, Francis Marion sent a delegation to the South Carolina State Student Legislature in Columbia this fall. The delegation had been inactive for a number of years, but thanks to Dr. Carter and Cody's leadership, they were able to return to Columbia. And as a matter of fact, they even received a cohesive or cohesiveness award for the delegation effort this year because they were able to go in and instead of being wallflowers, to just jump right in and participate with the other colleges and universities and had a great deal of success. From student affairs, Teresa Ramey reported that the Welcome Week, the beginning of the school session this year, had over 2,000 students participating. Student Involvement Fair had 44 student organizations and 22 community agencies involved. A number of multicultural advisory events were held with Dr. David Gonzalez, a singer, poet, storyteller. We had a, the Multicultural Advisory Board hosted a cultural food fest with over 400 people in attendance. And joint activity with the athletic department, they brought in Mike Green, who's a noted speaker, who's been on campus a number of times. Over 200 people attended and this was an alcohol educational awareness program that has been quite successful. Fall Fest had nearly 500 people involved. The Career Fair had over 40 employers and 150 students involved. And the leadership Francis Marion University program continues to grow with 36 students. So they've had a very busy fall over in the student affairs. In the athletic department, Athletic Director Hartsler reported again, of course, the progress on the athletic facility across the highway over there and how that's moving along. The men's and women's soccer programs have just completed their seasons. As you may know, we're, the university will be looking for a new men's soccer coach immediately. And as Murray says, he's already received some inquiries within an hour or two of that being made public. So they'll be looking at hiring a new director of soccer, coach of the soccer program immediately. Men's and women's basketball kicks off men's this weekend, or actually tonight, and then women's next weekend. But everything seems to be on track over there. And that really concludes our report for the day. Thank you.
Any questions, discussion? Hearing none. Moving right along, president's report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, let me just cover a few topics very, very quickly. Since the board last met, we have opened the Performing Arts Center at a marvelous weekend opening over, actually over four days. Since that opening, comments and critiques coming back, not just from the community, but throughout the state and throughout the region with regard to that center have been superlative. I've mentioned to the, to the executive committee a little earlier, received a very, very nice letter from Mayor Knox White of Greenville this past week. Mayor White was actually involved early on in coming to Florence and talking to community leadership as to how the creation of a performing arts center could serve as a catalyst for the revitalization of downtown, similar to what occurred with the Peace Center in Greenville. And just to summarize Mayor White's letter, complimented us on the completion of the facility and praised us on the elegant design of the facility. I thought that that was a very, very gracious letter coming from the mayor of Greenville. Mr. Chairman, many people so far have mentioned the completion of the athletic complex, but I just want to add my voice to that, that that process is coming along swimmingly. It's going to be a wonderful addition to this campus. The other part to this that we haven't talked about is the extent to which, by the time we get finished with our facilities crews and our horror culturalists working over there, it's going to be such a natural extension of the beauty of this campus across the road. And that, that lake that's the centerpiece of it, perhaps I should say, Lake Coleman, which will be the centerpiece of it, will be such a wonderful addition to the campus, not just from the standpoint of the scenic design and the beauty, but as an extension of the trails and walking paths and the like, which so uniquely distinguish this campus as a, as a good place to go to school and also a wonderful place to visit. Mr. Chairman, if you recalled our last meeting, we talked to the board about the possibility of considering the feasibility of proceeding with degrees in industrial engineering and public administration, Master of Public Administration. The provost has overseen the development of two feasibility studies with faculty groups that are working to examine the feasibility, cost estimates, employability, market demands of those degrees. Those reports should be completed soon after the beginning of the calendar year. Assuming that there are no, no exceptional findings in those reports, we will likely come back to the board at its March meeting with some recommendations pertaining to those degrees. And again, that would be the baccalaureate degree in industrial engineering and a Master of Public Administration degree. Again, I'm not in a position now to tell you what those recommendations would likely be. We'll wait and see that the, what the, what's concluded through the feasibility studies. Mr. Chairman, over the past year, we've been briefing the board periodically about the governor's efforts to move ahead with accountability-based funding for all the 13 colleges and universities in South Carolina. The 13 presidents and chancellors have been working with the governor's staff and the Commission on Higher Education staff, putting together a template to move forward with that accountability-based funding. with that accountability-based funding. We have, and will distribute this morning, in fact, we'll distribute now to you, the latest document, draft document. I think this likely will be the final draft document that we take forward to the General Assembly with recommendations of codifying this into law for the General Assembly to examine. Let me urge, I obviously am not going to go through it this morning, but I'll brief you at each, at each point in the process. Please, when you have the opportunity, would you look through here? And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call, and I'll be glad to discuss any aspect of this, of this plan with you. Again, I believe that the CHE staff, a delegation of university presidents and the governor's staff will be working over the next six weeks to put this into legislation, to send to the General Assembly when they reconvene in January. Mr. Chairman, we will celebrate commencement at the university on December seventeenth. The commencement speaker will be Mayor Steve Benjamin of Columbia, and we will also, and who will also receive an honorary degree, and will also award honorary degrees to Representative Carl Anderson, who represents Georgetown and Williamsburg Counties in the State General Assembly. And we will also recognize and award an honorary degree to Dr. Sylvia Luftkin. If many of you recall, Dr. Luftkin retired last year after serving as a very, very successful founding chair of our nursing program. Bringing Sylvia back and awarding her an honorary degree is a way for the entire university community to thank her for the, for the very, very diligent work she went and put in, establishing the foundation for that program. Finally, Mr. Chairman, the last comment I would make is that immediately after the board meeting today, we will have a luncheon over in the cottage with the writers and poets that are on campus who are part of the celebration of the PD Fiction and Poetry Festival. Every board member is invited to join that contingent, again, at the cottage immediately after this meeting. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report to the board.
Thank you, Mr. President. Any questions? Hearing none. Want to move on to unfinished business, have one other action item. I really want to thank Mr. Robert Lee and Frank Elmore and Melissa Emery for taking the charge to work through some of these bylaw issues and changes, and I think Mr. Lee's going to continue to do that and bring some other changes back, maybe if not in March, into June meeting. But we do have one that he'd like to bring to the group this morning. Mr. Lee?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you go to Tab Five, the Bylaws Committee is consistent. Ms. Emery and Mr. Elmore and myself will bring forward two amendments, and if you'll let me go through both of them, we'll vote on what the chair allows at one time. The amendment, Section Four of the bylaws, which is, the successive changes are in italics, I'm not going to read it to you, but in essence, it addresses the officers of the board's service terms. The main thing is that there was no provision with regard to the succession of the vice chair into the chair seat and those items, so that's covered. The Second Amendment is six A, print one, clause print, which is the, which the chairman asked that we consider, and that is to increase the size of the executive committee to include not only the standing chairs of committee, which is what it is now, but all the previous board chairs who continue to serve on the executive trustees. So this comes unanimously from the Bylaws Committee, and I'd move its adoption.
We have a motion, need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Only thing I would add is I certainly appreciate everybody's involvement. I know we've expanded some of these committees and have some special appointments, and my goal as chairman is to try and have as much involvement as possible. And I really appreciate greatly your support and willingness to serve in these capacities, but also to provide support for the university, and most of all, to pride me of help and assistance as I work through this chairmanship. Any other discussion for that? I would mention to Mr. President, if this is adopted, that this would go into effect immediately.
Yes, sir. That's correct. I would remind the chair you need a two-thirds.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes for both of the amendments, and will go into effect immediately. Thank you. No other unfinished business? Any new business you'd like to bring forward the group at this time? Hearing none. Executive session not needed. Having no further business, I'll make a motion that we adjourn. Need a second.
Second.
Second. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.